After six, I'd like to call the meeting of the Chester County Council to order, please. The first order business here is, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Wilson for handling the meeting, chairing the meeting in my absence at the last meeting, so I'd like to thank him for that. And next, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance and education.
Yeah, behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's remain standing. This evening, our kind and gracious heavenly Father, I come to you thanking you for waking us this morning and bringing us to this point in time, but thank you for watching over us through our holiday weekend and bringing us all back here to do Chester County's business in safe and healthy. We ask that you continue to watch over this county, watch over its employees, watch over, most definitely, watch over its citizens. These and all other things, I ask in your son Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. Moving along to number three on the agenda of approval of the minutes of August the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion or second on that?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
You got a second?
Second.
Motion of the second. Any comments or motions of correction? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
I was not at that meeting, so I didn't vote on that, so all of them, truly set me. All right, citizens' comments. There's no citizens' comment? Okay, thank you. There's no citizens' comments yet. And moving to five, there's no public hearing. And also moving to number six on the agenda is ordinance resolutions and proclamation. Under eight, the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, entitled only, amending ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, which amends the ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, to provide for the designation and expenditures of unallocated ARPA funds and providing for other related matters. Need a motion on that? You're gonna need a motion in a second.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, title only.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any questions or comments on that one? Would you like to explain that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. Originally, two projects were funded in twenty twenty-one under twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, and then in twenty twenty-two, it was amended with twenty twenty-two dash ten, where council added a third project for the use of ARPA funds. All of those are completed and fully funded, whether it been through ARPA or another funding source, as is the Fort Long Sewer Project with Skip and Rio Grants. We now have until December of this year to allocate the remainder of those funds, or we lose them, and so we don't want to do that. So, federal government has numerous times opened the parameters regarding the use of those funds as well to allow for counties and cities more flexibility in the use of those. Mr. Darby and myself are going through a list of items after speaking with many of our local officials, departments, and looking at counties' needs, and we're trying to narrow down a list. I'll have it ready by the next council meeting so that you can see where those allocations are gonna, are gonna be a recommendation to make the allocation of the remaining funds. I think just items on the list for approval are all items that were being sourced for future capital expenditures, so basically what I'm saying there, it's not frills and extra things that we're looking to buy with, with that ARPA money, but it's actually to allow us to free up maybe debt service or other capital items. And I'll give you just, I know I've talked to many of you, but the sheriff's office, the jail getting it up to a standard, we've been working really hard. Joe, the sheriff, and Wayne Alley have submitted recommendations for a plan to get the jail up to a standard to get us by for a few years, several years. Sheriff calls it a five-year plan, I call it five to ten, but till we can, till we can fund and we can, we're able to actually fund a new jail. And you, I know that's all on many of your minds, but this is a great start. And so we'll come to you next council meeting with that list of items, recommendation of how to expend the rest of those ARPA funds, and you guys will be able to vote on it. And again, it's three readings, so next meeting, if you want us to go back to drawing board on something, we can do that as well, but I think you'll be pleased with it.
Thank you, Mr. Hester, for that explanation. Any other comment?
You might have already said it, but what's the amount of the unallocated ARPA funds?
I'm gonna give you the, my rough number, but two-point-six million dollars. There's some change built in there, too, I just don't have that number right in front of me.
You know other questions or comments? All in favor of passing this as the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
None, I'm slow, thank you. Okay, moving along to number seven on the agenda, the administrative report, Mr. Hester.
All right. Once again, Mr. Chairman, council members, I'm gonna keep it brief tonight, but I've got three things on my list. First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Corbin, Corbin Dawson. I almost said Shulkey because it was what was at the top of my page, but Corbin. I had to look at it twice. So, Corbin is our new network engineer, and he's no stranger to Chester County because he was a Chester County employee previous to this and worked for our emergency services, EMS department, David Stormaway. He's got a background in biology, science, and IT, been working for EMS for four years prior to this, and interviewed for the position. He loves rural communities and helping them grow, and excited to bring his experience to the ID department in order to serve Chester County. And so we just welcome you, Corbin, and thank you for moving over into this new role, greatly needed. As you all know, it was only David servicing all our elected officials in our entire county, and so this is one of the areas that is extremely important, and so we're just thankful to have him on board. Next, can you put that picture up for me? So, I have to show you all.
All right.
Little Sutton Oliver. It was baby Sutton Ray Oliver, was born Friday, this past Friday. Callie and Matt Oliver, parents, brother Hagan, but he measured nineteen-three-quarter inches long and weighed seven pounds, four ounces. So they're both mom, they told me to make sure I showed you guys James and Catherine, but they're both home doing fine. They came home Sunday, yesterday, I'm sorry, yesterday afternoon, and they even made a surprise visit by the office today. We took some pictures with the baby up front, but they're doing very well, so just wanted to make that announcement. And then the last thing is just keep our project manager, Harold Hayes, in your prayers. He, he had a death of a family member, very unexpected this past weekend as well, and so just keep him and his family in your prayers. And that concludes my administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Hester, for that report, and congratulation to the Olivers on the new addition to the family for that, that is, I think it looked like his mom.
I don't know, I think, I think consensus around here was the father.
I'm gonna tell her it looked like her. I'll get on her good side. All right, moving along to number eight is old business, from Chester County Transportation Committee meeting, the recommendation for roads to be paved for twenty twenty-five using annual C funds, and I think we'll vote on these both at the same time, and also for the one-time funds, because we voted together when we did it in our CCT meeting. So, need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, we approve the recommendation of Mr. Hall's from the roads to be paved using annual land one-time C funds.
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments on that, or comments? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
None, I'm slow, thank you. Okay, under B, second reading of CCMA twenty-four dash eleven, Timothy McWhorter's request a portion of point five-six-six acres, tax map one-five-four dash zero-zero dash zero-zero dash zero-zero-seven dash zero-zero-zero, located at thirty-five-eighty Catawba River Road, Fort Long, South Carolina, two-nine-seven-one-four, to be rezoned from agriculture district AG to rural two district R two. The planning commission voted five to zero to approve.
I'll make a motion with whole planning commission on CCMA twenty-four dash eleven.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comment or questions on that? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All in favor.
None, I'm slow, thank you. I gotta get my page turned here. Okay, on to new business, on to nine, Old English District Board, ATAX funding update, Mr. Jenny Parrish, Old English District.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Council, thank you so much for having me. I have a quick presentation, I won't keep you guys for too long, but just want to share an update on the Old English District and what we've been up to. All right, let's get started. Maybe, oh, there we go, okay. So about the Old English District, I know, I do know some of you, it has been about several years since I've been to present to council, so just want to give you a brief overview. The Old English District, or you'll hear me refer to it as the OED, was created by the legislature in nineteen eighty-two with the mission to market and promote the tourism assets of our region and its seven counties, and those counties are Chester, Chesterfield, Fairfield, Kershaw, Lancaster, Union, and York, named for, of course, the seventeen-seventies settlements here in South Carolina by the British. Our marketing objectives, as the mandate from the state is, are to, the purpose of our marketing efforts is to promote attractions, hotels, restaurants, and festivals and events in our region. We have implemented a multi-tiered marketing and advertising strategy that includes the following: digital and print advertising, robust social media content, collaboration campaigns, continually updated website, which we just relaunched our website in March of this year, with inspirational content and heavy on imagery, a destination guide, and media and public relations visits to the region, and then pitches as well. We are committed to inspiring and encouraging visitors to come to the OED, stay overnight, and spend money with our regional partners. So just want to share a little bit about our last year's success, successes. Let's see, sorry, I'm trying to operate two systems at once, not going well. So we launched our new website, as I said, in March of this year, and what we did was we removed over nine hundred low-to-no-traffic listings, and those were just business listings that people were just not clicking on, because they were either mentioned somewhere else on our site, or just they weren't interested. So we, we refocused on storytelling and itineraries, so we've come up with five things to do in Chester County, or how to spend a weekend if you're interested in history, so itineraries and storytelling over just business listings. Total site metrics in that time, since we've launched, a two-hundred-and-fifty-two percent increase in overall site sessions, and that's driven primarily by paid media, so we're putting money into advertising to drive traffic to the website. Direct traffic or organic traffic also saw a thirty-nine percent increase in sessions. Visitor behavior, the bounce rate dropped from fifty-seven percent in twenty twenty-three to twenty-nine percent, which is a nearly fifty percent decrease in the bounce rate, which means people are getting to our site and actually staying for a period of time as opposed to just clicking right out. Time spent on site, average session duration is up to two minutes and thirty-one seconds, which is almost a full minute longer than it was in the year prior to that. Three-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty sessions in that, in this fiscal year, sorry, July one, twenty twenty-three to June twenty twenty-four, as opposed to the previous year, which is a five-hundred-and-thirty-seven percent increase. Two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five new users, which is a five-hundred percent increase from the previous year. A little bit about our media strategy, so our media strategy, and we do work with a full-service marketing agency who helps us strategize and then place the media, and then give us the metrics. It leverages data-driven insights and personas, as I mentioned, the history buffs, nature lovers, outdoor enthusiasts, on the platforms that they engage with the most. By combining our media tactics with audience insights from our marketing and advertising agency, we ensure the right message reaches the right people at the right time. We're continuously tracking engagement through custom conversions on our website and optimizing performance through creative testing, driving both awareness and visitation to the Old English District. And some of those metrics for our, from our media is a hundred-and-eighty percent, a hundred-and-eighty-six percent increase in total website sessions, and sixty-nine percent rise in engaged sessions per user, a one-hundred percent boost in average session duration, and our social media ads saw a one-hundred-and-sixty-five percent increase for non-branded meta, which is Facebook and Instagram, prospecting ads. Prospecting is people who've never shown an interest in the Old English District or have never been there, so we're targeting those people who have never heard of us. So, public relations efforts and successes, some media coverage over the last fiscal year, six press trips, we sent writers to all seven counties in the region, thirteen placements, one-hundred-and-sixty-five million readership, and then seventeen-hundred-and-sixty-eight social media shares, just some snippets of the articles. Lansford Canal, you can see the Rocky Shole Spider Lilies there, and that was actually mentioned in three different publications, I'll touch on that in a little bit. Other things that we did, we went to, we sent a representative to the International Media Marketplace, which is held in New York City on January twenty-fourth of this year, and they, they met with twenty-four different journalists, they had a one-sheeter, so front and back, about the Old English District and some different storylines. You can see local, local flavors and fresh experiences, journeys worth savoring, great old outdoors, and historic adventures. We also sent quarterly newsletters to a curated list of media, and you can see some of those numbers there, September, November, March, and May, and the open rates, pretty strong, sixty-seven percent was our most recent open rate, so they like to see that number kind of hovering around the sixty to seventy mark, so we're right on target for that. Our last media effort, which was timed in conjunction with the launch of our new site, they went out in March, was a mailer box sent to twenty different journalists who had expressed interest in the region, and it was curated with local products. We included our new destination guide, some promo items, a sticker there with hashtag OED, some White Blossom Coffee, some Cotton Hills strawberry dressing, so we, lots of local products from around the region, we've also got Pucker Butt in there, and the box was designed to look like a suitcase, so grab your suitcase and go, and we got several, several people, journalists who posted their unboxing of the media kit on social media, and they tagged us. So, it's just another way to spread awareness, as well as entice the journalists to maybe come and write a story. So, I want to touch briefly on our collaboration over this last fiscal year with Chester County PRT. We worked closely with the new PRT department over the last fiscal year to help them get their tourism program up and running. We did use some of those ATAX dollars, or most of those ATAX dollars, to do so, so we helped with those funds to develop the new website, promotional items, creative production, and the paid advertising efforts, and I know Amy and Britt are gonna touch on that. We shared photo and video assets across, kind of across the aisle, so we had some of Chester County that they may not have had, and they did a photo shoot, y'all, I'm sure you're all aware of that, in October twenty twenty-three, so we did receive those assets as well. So we have those in our asset library, and they have any photos and videos that we have taken of Chester County. We exhibited at the inaugural tourism fair in February, and we are continuously offering support, educational resources, and suggestions to the tourism team. These are some of our Chester County dedicated efforts, and as I mentioned in the beginning, we are a regional tourism organization, so we focus mainly on getting people to the region. If we can package one county with another, or an, kind of a grouping of items as history or nature, we can get visitors to stay longer in the region, spend more money, as opposed to just having them come to one county, so their, their options are a little bit more limited with just one county. This is just a sampling of certain Chester County dedicated social media posts. These are some in the news, those are the four press hits that we had mentioned, that I mentioned earlier that mentioned Chester County, three of those are Lansford Canal, and one is Skydive Carolina, some blogs that we have posted on our own site, and then, oops, I don't know what that was. So looking forward into this year, which we're already almost three months into, these are some of our advertising and marketing efforts and our proposed budget for the ATAX funding, which you so graciously have awarded to us. So it's some creative examples, and these are Chester-specific, so one of the shifts that we're doing this year is we're doing some placemaking on our print ads. You can kind of see in the bottom right-hand corner, above the Discover South Carolina logo, we've added a map feature, because visitors don't know where we are, they don't know where they are in the region, so we're adding a map to our destination guide this year, but we're also adding on our ads a placemaking function so that they can tell, oh, this picture specifically was from Cotton Hills Farm, or this picture was from Chester State Park, the Catawba River, or Lansford Canal. So, and each of them, we've, you know, our whole campaign last year was connect with character, so this year we're funneling down from character to connect with homegrown, connect with adventure, connect with nature, connect with family. We have a whole series, so we're really trying to dive into and target those individual interests with the curated advertising efforts. These are some digital versions of the same ads, they don't have the placemaking, the map, because the ad space is just smaller, but these will click through directly to our website, and you'll see here, I mentioned creative testing. We're creatively testing Old English District, the full logo versus OED, so stay tuned on what people prefer. These are our videos, two videos. It didn't play? Oh, okay, great. So the first video was just completed in July, and the second video was earlier in the year, but we are going to be putting a lot of money back behind video ads this year on YouTube, Google, Meta, so you'll see that in our next, the proposed budget for the spending, and this is obviously not our entire advertising and marketing budget, this is just the portion that is received from Chester County. So, digital, Google SEM, which is search engine marketing, it's basically the building block for any advertising campaign, about five thousand dollars, Google Ads, and responsive banners, some of those digital ads I showed you, four thousand dollars, Meta Ads, it's Facebook and Instagram, five thousand dollars. The video ads I mentioned, seven, because that, it just costs more to place video ads. Public relations efforts, three thousand dollars, and then print ads, around seven thousand. So, and that's gonna be running all year long, it's, it's some of it's already in place, but it's just, we, we advertise throughout the year, we do have, we ramp it up in shoulder seasons and in peak seasons, but we have advertising running all year long. So, thank you so much for your time, happy to answer any questions if you have any, or I'll stick around for the rest of the meeting.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I was very pleased to see Great Falls Adventures boats and several of those videos, and I wondered what was gonna happen with that footage they did that day.
Now you know, yeah, Mike was so gracious and saved our tails, because we had a couple different outfitters lined up for that day, and they kind of bailed on us at the last minute, so Mike came in clutch at the, at the eleventh hour to take our group out on the water, so thank you very much for that.
Do you coordinate any of your tourism with our tourism, Mr. Stedham?
Yes, sir.
You do?
Absolutely.
That's great that you combined those efforts, had to make it a much more.
Yeah, we have a lot of fun. Y'all got a really great team. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Parrish. Okay, on to B, Parks Recreation and Tourism Department update, Mr. Britt Stedham.
How you doing tonight, Council, and thank you, Mr. Branham. We're excited about tourism in Chester County, and I want to thank Ms. Parrish and her team, they have assisted us all along the way, and some of the things that we're gonna show you is what she was just talking about, what we're actually doing in Chester County. But first of all, I want to introduce you to our tourism associate, Ms. Amy Bender. And a lot of this work you're gonna see here in just a second is her work, and she works tirelessly for us in our county to promote tourism, so I'm gonna let her start off our presentation on the first few slides.
Good evening, thank you guys for letting us share. Just really quickly, we're, like everyone has said, we're really thankful for the partnership with OED. I know for me especially, the, the resources and the experience has been invaluable, just they've answered emails, phone calls, they've met with both of us and me personally, we have a photo shoot coming up this week that we're gonna partner together and share assets, and so it's just been incredible to have that, that support. And so, one of the things I'll just quickly go through is, as they said, so you can see here, just our partnership with Old English District, and those funds have been invaluable in a lot of the things that have really helped launch tourism in Chester County. So as we said before, I'll come back to this slide, but I'm gonna show you just our website, which we launched in February, along with the tourism fair, that's just a screenshot, but just in, since its launch, we've had over eighteen thousand views on our website alone, and so that was partnered with OED funds and helped us launch that, which we, the bare bones were, had already been created by Robert Long and the Economic Development Department, and we sort of took those bones and then added to it to make it what it is today, and so we're really excited about that growth. And so then also, along with, in February, we had the tourism fair, which a lot of you were there, we had over four hundred visitors, lots of vendors, and we were really excited about that, just to see the excitement grow, and it was a great launch for tourism, that's when we launched our website and our video highlights, which I'll touch on in a minute. And you can see in the, one of the things that we commonly heard a lot after the tourism fair and during the tourism fair was that even for citizens of Chester County, including myself, there were so many undiscovered gems in our county that people didn't know about, and so I feel like our department has really been key in helping to spread the news about some of those undiscovered gems. So we're excited about that. And then one of the things that we also promoted at our tourism fair was a video highlight. So, as she said, in the fall of last year, we hired a professional crew, take part, and we spent four days capturing over fifty locations in Chester County. We captured video footage and still footage, and you can see a few of those photos here, that's just a sample, but we have used these photos, we've partnered with OED to also give them access to those, but you've seen them on our social media page, we use them on our website, we have the video highlights that we have shared, and it's just full of that. And so it's been an invaluable resource to have, capturing the beauty and people having fun and enjoying the county, and people like to see themselves in these places, and so that captures that for us. So, the other thing that we had with OED was, since we had the tourism fair, we needed things to put in people's hands, you know, we couldn't just talk about it, we needed to give them something. So we were able to create brochures, we did swag, so we had cups and pens and notepads and things like that.
Tote bags.
Tote bags that we were able to pass out, and you can see in the photo, one of the things that we just got a couple weeks ago, we were able to get a ten-by-ten canopy with our logo, a really nice tablecloth, a banner, and that just touches on some of it, because brand awareness is important, is important. And so that's one of the things that we've really been trying to promote heavily, is just getting that logo out there, getting the name out there. And then one of the things that we've also been able to do is trackable QR codes. So with the partnership with OED, we were able to get trackable QR codes, that's a mouthful to say, but it's important for marketing that we are able to track which ads are, how they're doing, and what kind of people are looking at them. And so, for instance, if you receive the South Carolina Living Magazine, which just came out a couple days ago, if you look through there, you will see a Chester County ad with a QR code, and I just checked it today, and there's already been six or seven scans just from that ad. So now we can track, is our money going towards a good use in that ad? And so we're looking forward to seeing how that, you know, tracking that and seeing how that does. And then one of the other things that we are excited about is another partnership with South Carolina Parks Recreation and Tourism. So you'll see the Discover South Carolina logo, which is their logo, but we recently are sort of a courtesy member right now of the Front Porch Program, which involves now of the Front Porch Program, which involves all nine of the welcome centers in the state of South Carolina. So this opens so many doors for us to share information, to share materials. And so just last week, Britt was able to put our brochure in the hands of all nine of these visitor centers across the state. And so we need to do more, but we're starting. And so it's an exciting program. And because they know that we're building a visitor center, they're giving us the courtesy ahead of time to be part of certain activities until we're an official visitor center. And then we can be part of the Front Porch Program. And Rachel Lind of the Fort Mill Welcome Center has been an invaluable resource for us, just letting us know about different opportunities to spread our awareness about Chester County. And then the last thing for me to share is another partnership with South Carolina PRT, and that's advertising programs. So one of the big ones for us was the Tourism Advertising Grant, or TAG. So this is a reimbursable matching funds program for advertising in the state of South Carolina. And so we were, we applied, and we were awarded over $20,000 in reimbursement funds to advertise Chester County. Now, there are certain requirements that we have to meet. So one of the things, if you look in the South Carolina Living ad that just came out, you'll see the Discover South Carolina logo alongside ours. That's part of the requirement. We have to include their logo along with ours. But they will give us 50% back of what we paid to put that ad in. And so we've already done several ads through the TAG program, and we have many more throughout this fiscal year that we're excited about. And Britt will touch on those some more. And I think that's all for me. I think I touched on everything.
As you can see, Amy's great. And we form a good team and work well together, but she really does a great job for Chester County. Moving forward, one of the co-ops that we have with South Carolina PRT is that our 30-second video, which we're going to show just in a second, is playing in three of the visitor centers, Fort Mill, Hardyville, and Dillon. So we went up to the Fort Mill Visitor Center to see our video, as you can see it there. And just those three visitor centers alone see 4 million people a year. So we're going to flip it to the video. And these are 30-second videos. They limit us at 30 seconds. And you guys have seen some of that footage. But what's exciting is in our budget that you guys approved, we have money to do more video and more photos. And Amy and I were just discussing those numbers today and getting some of that lined up to move forward this September. Now, here's some examples of our online advertising campaigns. Mr. Hester is big on metrics. He likes to see the numbers, you know, how we're doing. South Carolina Online Living, in their banner, 27,000 impressions. That's how many times it's seen. The South Carolina Living in September, 27,000. The Discover South Carolina, that's their Facebook page at South Carolina PRT. And as Jenny can tell you, this is like gambling the day that this thing is open, that you can get a good day. August is a good day, 293,000, I mean, a good month, 293,000 impressions from that Facebook post. And then one that just came out, the State Parks, E-Parks Newsletter. So that goes out to 95,000 people. And we have a thing there on the South, Discover Small Town Charm in Chester County, South Carolina. So these are just a few examples of our online advertising. Most of these are supported by the TAG grant. So we're getting half of that paid for by South Carolina PRT. Here's some of our print advertising campaigns, the July-August edition of Blue Ridge Country Magazine. You can see the QR code. But Blue Ridge Country does a good job of sending us leads. And they'll send the names and where people are from that are interested in our ads. And Amy goes and makes folders and sends them brochures and pamphlets and information from Chester County. So we're giving people that are interested in our county the personal touch. And then finally, that's the Discover South Carolina. That's the big South Carolina PRT Discover Guide. When I came in, day one, I was asked, why aren't we in the Discover Guide? That's the, that's the big publication from the state. This year and moving forward, we will be in that, and over 360,000 of those are printed. And here's the last two in South Carolina Living, one in September, running now. Like she said, we've had seven inquiries from that QR code. And then there'll be, there was one that ran in April. So here are our metrics. We launched our Facebook page on September 15. And we've had about 435,000 people reach us. That's individual views of the page. And what's important here is you'll see 95,000 organic, but 363,000 from ads. Just like Ms. Parrish was talking, it's so important to advertise online. And we'll look at that number a little more here in just a second. But from that reach, we've had 24,000 interactions, 1,900 followers and growing on our page, but 10,000 link clicks. That means they, that means they came directly to the Chester County website. And remember, the website started in February. Here's a great example of our return on investment. So far to date, we've spent about $2,800 in advertising online. We have a much more robust budget moving forward. We're getting all that set up. We just started a new ad last week. But our biggest, our best performing post ad on Facebook so far was the video. We put $450 behind that, and it had 132,000 impressions. That means the number of times it was watched. Same people can watch it more than once. But I like the big number, 132,000, but 72,000 individual. And then you can see the next two were Ag and Art. And then the final one there, these are our top four performing posts, was about the Carolina Thread Trail and other trails in Chester County. And I'm going to finish it with this. One thing that Mr. Hester's asked all department heads to do is to develop metrics on how we're doing, to determine the tourism impact in the county. It's not an easy number, but I'm working on that. But there's no doubt that our tourism efforts are fueling the Gateway. We can look at that benefit right now by looking at the metrics at the Gateway. And so this year, starting July 1 and running through June 30, we have 58 events booked at the Gateway. Now, a lot of these are multi-day events, sometimes three and four day. And we're averaging about $4,600 in an event. But here's the big one. We have booked 266,000 on our books. That's 78% of what we did last year, and we're moving into the third month of the physical year. That's incredible results. Chester County's name is getting out there, and we're seeing it in our bookings at the Gateway. And then just to finish on a fun fact, the Gateway has hosted several major fast food chains. They've had conferences at the Gateway. And we had KFC, Arby's, Wendy's, and we just closed out McDonald's. We wanted to close that one out before this presentation. These big companies are having their conferences at the Gateway. And that's largely fueled by the revamping of our technology that you funded in last year's budget and what we did in our rooms. So that's the final thing that I have. Thank you, guys, very much. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question on the slide before last. Can you back up one?
Yes, sir.
Talk us through those numbers one more time. So you're at 78% of last year's income. Tell me the comparison on the months.
Say that one more time.
So last year being all of 2023?
So 2023, our rental income for the whole year.
The calendar year.
Yes, sir, for the calendar year. And just to full disclosure, we weren't able to really track revenues in the past. We could only track it as the income, or the check, or the credit card was entered into the county system. So you may get deposit, or you may get a refund, or you may get the actual check. So it was really difficult to track. With our new planning pod system, I can track revenues. So that means today I have a $2,000 event. That's a revenue for today. So I can look at the revenue across the whole year, not necessarily when we receive the payment. And so in my previous business, I would always track our revenues to see how we were doing. And I would look at the whole year, because I know what I'm done, and then what's also on the books. So that is all the revenue that we've done thus far, but through June 30, and we're still booking. Does that make sense?
So it's on fiscal year?
For the fiscal year.
And with two months.
I still don't follow. So we've got 78% for just two months?
So two months, two months and a day in, we pre-book, we're already at 78% of the revenue that we had last year. And we're only, and we've still got 10 months to go, let's call it.
We did 340 in rental income last year.
Yeah, but you're still upside down. You're still upside down in the deal. The Gateway costs way more money than what a little bit of money you're bringing in.
That's actually not accurate. We actually finished last year while it was still.
You paid the mortgage and the bond and all that and made money?
The bond doesn't go. The bond funded other things beside the Gateway, so it doesn't count against. So the Gateway, there was, there was more in that refinanced than just the Gateway. So I don't count that in, into that. That's paid from fee and loo money, so it doesn't come out of our general fund money. That's, that's a whole separate, that bond was funded differently. But if you take into account, Mr. Agee, the operating costs, which is what we're doing, let's take aside the capital cost, all right? And you take in the operating costs for the Gateway, and I'm going to use rough round numbers. When Mr. Stoudamire came here, all right, we were probably hitting about half of our operating expense for a year. Am I correct?
So the total revenue, best ever, before I came, was in 2022, we did 270,000. Last year, we hit a career best at 340,000. We were a 20% increase. And we're already at 270 with 10 months to go. We're going to beat that by a large margin. I'm going to do my best to get us there. But that right there is incredible data, that we've got 78% of the 340 that we did all of last year. And some of those bookings were, you know, they were before the new fiscal year. That would be in the previous year. But these are revenues as the events happen, we calculate it. And so the new system has given me a much more efficient way to look at our data and monitor. I can also look at it by month and see where we're short. August, I think we could have done a little better. I can look at the total number of events. When I see that, I can do last-minute specials, you know, things of that nature that I've been able to do in my previous business, or just advertise more. So I have a much more clearer picture of how we're doing than we did in the past.
And I don't want to get too far off on the Gateway, but what Mr. Stoudamire and his staff and through tourism, and I really do believe, I truly have seen the change in numbers when the tourism aspect started, that the difference in the revenue last year, and now that we're tracking where we are already this year, it continues to get better. When I look at that chart, it continues to do this. We funded all of the Gateway operations out of the Gateway Fund this year and not out of the general fund. The only thing that still is some kind of lingering over there in the general fund is power, but that's all lumped under. Tommy and I are very seriously talking about pulling that out, going and looking, separating that bill, because I truly think the Gateway can handle that as well, 100%. Now, will we pay back, will it, will it pay the mortgage? Well, it's not set up to pay the mortgage. That, that's just a fact of the matter. That's totally separate. Could it pay the mortgage? Well, we'll pay the mortgage probably before we know.
Well, I'm real pleased to say the numbers, I'm not fussing about it. Don't, don't go out here saying I'm fussing about it. But what I don't want is the citizens to think that the Gateway is making money, because it's not making money. You've got power bills, you've got expenses, all of those kinds of things come out of the general fund of what the citizens are paying for. You're offsetting that, which is great. But we don't want to not, we don't want somebody to think, well, we made $4,587.48. It didn't make that. Somebody had to pay the power bill, somebody had to pay the sewer, the water bill, sewer and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, you're doing a good job. Don't, don't get me wrong. I just don't like to have, in my perception, we're saying we're doing, we're paying the bill. That's not true.
We're getting close.
That's what I'm saying.
We're getting close.
It's a lot better than it was.
We're in the right direction. I don't think, I think anybody realized we'd get there overnight. But we are, we are, we are fast, vastly on the right track. And it, it, your support, you're supporting tourism, you're seeing the results, and we're getting there. And having a good team, which is here tonight and at the Gateway, we're all working hard to get there. And Brian, you know, we're going to do our best for you and for Council. Brian told me when, when he, the Gateway was kind of after the fact, and he said, don't spend, you know, don't spend too much time on that Gateway. Well, having an event venue in my past is kind of hard not to. And so I take great pride. Mr. Hester and I talked today about doing things at the Gateway. When you go to Farm Bureau, Bureau event the other night, and you see the people that were there, it's, it's a great tool for us in Chester. And yes, Mr. Agee, we, we need to do better, and we're getting there. But we're trying hard, and I appreciate everything.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Stoudamire, I remember back, way back in my first term, we had said the word tourism occasionally. And we didn't ever, we never got very deep into the subject. And so I was looking at Union County and the surrounding counties, what are they doing in tourism? Maybe we could do what they're doing. And then to jump forward to now and see the progress that we, Chester County has made in tourism is just astounding. And I'll give you credit, and your team, and Old English District, all of you, the credit for doing such good work.
Thank you.
And promoting Chester County.
Thank you.
Mr. Stoudamire, I'd like to thank you for your job that you're doing on this, because that was a big proposal of the Gateway. There's about three people in Chester County that brought that about, and a whole lot of financial negotiating, and first one thing, then another. It is a joy to see this thing come to fruition. And if we continue on the record you're going, we're going to take in over a million dollars a year. So, I mean, three months.
Easy now, Brian. Slow down.
I like the way you think that. I like the way you think.
We've got to think, we don't want to think.
I'm going to Mr. Hester's goal first.
So, but I'm saying, if we do well, as we've been doing in class, and I see under your direction, there's no reason why we shouldn't do that. And to Mr. Agee's point, that if we get that, I think the expenses, the revenue outweighed the expenses on that. And just thank you for that.
Thank you.
And also on the fast food people, McDonald's and the Hardee's and the Kentucky Fried Board, is that a southeastern regional thing, or is they nationwide, or what?
I think it's more of a regional. I don't know the exact names. It's McDonald's in lieu of.
McDonald's is a regional leadership.
Yeah, right. Yeah, those kind of things. More regional, yes, sir.
Yeah, but all those fast food people are regional type things coming in there.
Yes, sir.
And that's great. That'll bring a lot of notoriety to Chester County that.
I know Ms. Starnes, she really wanted to secure McDonald's.
The place to go between Charlotte and Columbia.
Yes, sir.
That is well noted for that. And thank you for what you're doing on that.
I appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Branham.
Well, one thing you have done extremely well, you hired a very nice lady to work for.
Well, let me just say, I think every meeting, I don't know if it just gets, I hate to jinx it, because I don't want to, but let me just say, every meeting, I feel like a department or a director comes up, and it's always really good news. It's always things are on the rise, things are moving in a good direction. And everybody's happy for the most part. And I think that reflects with us, with you guys, makes everybody's jobs easier, and hopefully it keeps the citizens happy in seeing that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you, Ms. Starnes. Thank you.
Ms. Starnes, where do you actually do think you may end up at, as far as revenue taken in on the Gateway?
Well, I know the number, including the utilities. And do you want me to?
Yeah.
That number, that number, to be fully in the black, is 462,000.
That's right.
And that's where I'm headed.
462.
I mean, because I need more, I need more help at the Gateway. And Mr. Hester said we can't help until we get this thing in, in the, in the red. So that 462 is what I'm heading to. Now, Brian and Tommy have discussed the utilities a little bit, and whether that goes on this year or not. Right now, it is. So that's my goal, 462.
And, and, and we advertise it, your marketing strategy, your scheme is, is pretty much social media and?
Yes, sir. You see the bang for your buck in the online advertising.
Yeah.
But the Gateway is also on our website, you know? And in the print media, everything is leading people back to our, to our website, where we have all the tourism assets in the county. The other thing that we, I think we've done well, particularly with the Tourism Fair, is that we cross-promoted the Gateway. So that event...
So that event was at the Gateway. So when you're saying, hey, we're doing the Tourism Fair, it's going to be at the Gateway Conference Center. And then we have some other things that we're working on with the Gateway, too, to give it more promotion and take advantage of its location. It's hard to argue that 56,000 cars come by that Gateway every single day. And if you multiply that times 1.55 people, you're looking at over 30 million people seeing the Gateway Conference Center. So it's in a great location. People are looking for, for those things. And I think in the past, we might not have been aggressive enough with our leads. So we're being way more aggressive with our leads now. And the Planning Pod System tracks our leads. So we can see if it came in in a phone call, if it came in on a website, then if they did a tour and did the tour present itself to become a booking. So, you know, looking at that as a whole has really made us more efficient. I think we had a lot of demand before. I think Brian would tell you that as well. But maybe we weren't as strategic in how we made those bookings or as efficient. So that's, that's a big part of it as well. But I truly believe when you look at tourism, you have to look at things that you're marketing or you're promoting, and the Gateway is one of them. So I think our efforts are working based simply on, on, on those metrics.
You're just $190,000, $190,000 away from your goal. And if you do, if you did that good in two months, I think we may be able to get there.
Getting, getting it on the right track for sure. Yes, sir.
And I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of tweaking as we go. Because you think about a year ago, it was almost, please book, anything book. You know, let's just take bookings. Now we're to the point where we're talking about, how do we attract the higher-end bookings? Because here's what I'll say. When you take anything, the maintenance and the upkeep and the damage and the expense on the backend that you guys don't hear about or see, and a $1,000 deposit doesn't cover. And so, you know, we're getting to the point where we might can be more selective on, on the type of rentals we use that facility for hiring. And we're not paying the upkeep and the maintenance to the same extent. And so there's a lot of things that we're learning when we're paying attention to everything. And so these guys are doing a great job. Tourism is a key part. Between economic development and tourism is key to the success of that Gateway and where it can go. His, Britt's team, and he does need more staff out there. And he's right, I won't give it to him yet.
No, no.
And, and we're, we're contracting some of our staff as needed. And think about to the point, if we got to where we were doing all of Gallo, if Gallo has come to us for training and we had an in-house caterer or a caterer we used out there and had the ability to do that and offer that for these day-long trainings and corporate people coming in, the money can go up. And he's putting together a plan for our rentals and how things should look. But we're going to have our ducks in a row before we come to you. But his staff and Amy coming on board, the other members, and they're a small group, but they're doing a phenomenal job. And Jenny, just thanks for being here. And, you know, when I came in, I met with Jenny, I think that was probably in the first couple of months. And, you know, kind of got our relationship with Old English back on track in a good way after COVID had sort of set everybody, you know, in, in a stall. And she was gracious with, with the funds that we allocate and how we put them back into Chester. And I think that relationship has grown with Britt and Amy, and we just appreciate them and what they do. It's, you don't really always see it, but you heard about it tonight. So very educational. So thanks to all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoudemire. Thank you. Very encouraging presentation.
Just, do you want to, are we going to make the recommendation now for the board, or is that?
We didn't necessarily have it on that way, but we can.
I mean, that's fine.
We can go ahead and do that.
Okay.
So you're talking about the allocation this year of the funds?
No, the, the, the appointment to the OED Board?
Oh, uh, that.
Let's wait on that?
Yeah, let's wait on that. That'll have to be an agenda item. I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the fact that the allocation had to go before council. Didn't, and what I'm getting at, guys, is, and ladies, is that in the past, the money that goes to Old English simply just went to Old English. Technically, it has to go in front of council. And so, but we will add that, Mr. Stoudemire, to the next. Okay?
Thank y'all again for that report. And moving along to number 10 on the agenda, Boards and Commission. Under A is Catawba Mental Health Board Appartment. Mrs. Erin Mosley, make that, please.
Yes, sir. I'd like to reappoint Ms. Melanie Saxon to the Catawba Mental Health Board.
All right. You got a motion in the second?
Second.
Second, got a motion for second to Ms. Saxon there. Any discussion? All in favor of appointing Ms. Saxon there? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Now, I'm a vote. All right, on the Rural Fire Commission resignation and appointment, Mr. Corey Guy.
Yes, first I want to announce that we had a resignation of Mr. James P. MacNeil III, who I had previously appointed to my Rural Fire Board, who we're proud that he actually took a job here working for the county as our Deputy Director of Fire. So because he took that job, he resigned from the Rural Fire Board. And because of his resignation, I am asking the county to stand with me and appoint Ms. Nettie Archie, who's in the audience tonight, to the Rural Fire Board, District Fire, representation.
All righty. We're going to handle these separately, right, the resignation. I second that. Okay. All in, all need a motion to, he's already made the motion to the resignation of Mr. McNeil.
I'll second that.
I'll second it. Second. All right, got a motion in the second and discussion. You're none? All in favor of accepting Mr. Neil's resignation? Raise your right hand and say aye.
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 And also for, he's already, Mr. Guy's made the motion to accept Ms. Archie on the Fire Board there. We need a second on that.
Second.
Second, got a second for that. Any discussion?
I had a question. So Ms. Archie, are, is she a member of the COG Board or not anymore?
Yeah.
And that's, that's okay to do both?
As far as I.
So, so we, we've crossed that bridge with the Rural Fire Board before. And because the Rural Fire Board is only a recommendation board, that's okay.
Ms. Archie is in the audience tonight. And so if you don't know Ms. Archie, speak to her before leaving. So all, I got a motion in the second on that. All in favor of appointing Ms. Archie to the Fire Board? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Now, I'm a vote. Okay. Take that. Okay. We don't have any meeting of the session, executive session. And falls down to the council's coming. Have any council comments?
Since I usually have a comment, I'm on, this week's comment is going to be about the Catawba River Keepers Foundation Annual River Suite, which will be on October the 5th. Sheriff Dorsey will be participating cleaning up below the Fishing Creek Bridge. And I'm looking for volunteers with boats. I need some boats to come up to Fishing Creek and help us clean up a big mess of plastic. So if you want to volunteer, go to the Catawba River Keepers website, and you can sign up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. For that, anybody else have anything they'd like to say? The only thing I'd like to say is congratulations to all of us on the birth of the baby boy again. And I still think it looks like a mother. So, need a motion, if you don't have anything else, need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
I'll second.
Second, motion to second, all in favor of adjourn? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Now, I'm a vote.